Good evening and welcome to the September 10th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to city council. Light system is three minutes. On our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. We ask at that time that you take your seat. The city code identifies participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address city council on matters that are germane to council. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of this ordinance. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Father Chiroz with Saint Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Vick will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but are under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. O Lord, you who sustains us and points us in the right direction, may we always have you as our focus. As we celebrated last week, a day honoring those who labor, may we be thankful to the citizens of not only our city of Newport News, but also those who through their labor of love have assisted in the formation of what we proudly refer to as the United States of America. May we also keep in remembrance those innocent victims of the attacks on our nation on September 11th, 2001, and pray that tragedies as those never occur on our American soil again. And our prayers are extended to the family and friends of the innocent 15-year-old citizen of Newport News who lost his life this morning at the bus stop. May his memory be eternal. May we all be reminded of Saint Paul's words in the Book of Hebrews, Chapter 6, Verse 1. "Let us go on to perfection, not laying again the foundation of repentance from dead works and of faith towards God. May we all continue in committed living works, bettering our community, and may the future generation share the same civic pride as do those here this evening and those who have a great pride in being citizens of the city of Newport News." This we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like, at this time, I would like to welcome our Hispanic Advisory Committee and Friends of the Hack to join us at the podium. So they wrote the pro- Test us, okay. They wrote the proclamation in Spanish. I'm not going to read that one. I'm going to read the one in English, but I appreciate the hard work that went into translating it. So, as council comes up, September 15th through October 15th is annually celebrated as Hispanic Heritage Month. This year, our Hispanic Advisory Committee, city departments, and community partners have put together extensive programming to help us celebrate here in the city of Newport News. I'm proud that tonight marks the first-ever reading of a Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation for the city of Newport News, which I think we'll talk about. Also, I found it, so thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated annually from September 15th to October 15th, is a time to honor the rich culture, history, and contributions of Americans whose roots trace back to Spain, Mexico, Central, South America, and the Caribbean, what began in 1968 as a week-long observance has expanded to a month dedicated to recognizing and honoring the vibrant diversity of Hispanic community across the nation. And whereas this year's theme, "Pioneers of Change: Shaping the Future Together," celebrates the spirit of innovation, resilience, and unity that defines the Hispanic experience, highlighting how these qualities have driven progress and continue to inspire new possibilities. And whereas our Hispanic population in Newport News continues to grow, now making up nearly 10% of our city, we proudly acknowledge the many contributions of Hispanic residents, businesses, organizations, and faith-based institutions that make Newport News and the entire coastal Virginia region stronger, more diverse, and inclusive. And whereas Newport News is committed to embracing the rich heritage and vibrant culture of our Hispanic community to foster unity and exclusion for all. Now therefore, I, Philip Jones, Mayor of the city of Newport News, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2024 through October 15th, 2024, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Newport News." Now, before we clap, before we clap, because it's more than just a proclamation, right? We actually want to talk about all of the offerings that we have for the city. So, we invite everyone to join us in celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month through engaging bilingual events, resource fairs, youth activities, and our inaugural Hispanic Heritage Month Restaurant Week. We ask that you go to visitnewportnews.com/hhm for details. So now, we'll present the proclamation. Okay, so now, I'd like to present to you the proclamation, and as you see, we don't have one but two. The first one is in English, the second one is in Spanish. Thank you to the Hack for this translation, as we helped to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with all in this community. So now, I think they told me we're going to take a photo. So let's all get very, very close. I'm getting good at this. Let's get tight. Yeah, let's get in front of the podium. I'm going to turn this one off. And before we start the public hearings, I just want to say thank you to the Hack for coming and for any citizen that wants to get engaged. I've often told city council, I think the city can do a better job of engaging with the 10% of individuals that make up our Hispanic community. So this is just one step. Owen, I want to say thank you for all of your help. I know I sent a bunch of emails, but Owen helps to run the hack. To everyone that came out, Patricia and everyone, we really appreciate it. So please go to the website, check it out. I'll try to hit every single restaurant. Should be a good time. We'll save some of the comments about this morning that happened in the South District for council comments, and I'll probably let Councilman Ely and Councilman Vick go first and sit in council comments later. Public hearings, page four. Item E1 is requested adoption ordinance granting additional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash 2024 dash 005 to Bell King Road LLC, Madison Company of Newport News, and FRHP Lincolnshire LLC to allow for the construction and operation of a large motor vehicle sales, repair, and/or service facility on parcels located at 363 Bell King Road and 341 Ed Wright Lane totaling 10.79 acres, Zone M1, Light Industrial. At this time, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. One, Mr. Grant Dukach.
Mr. Grant, you are.
Good evening, council. Grant Dukach, Excel Engineering, 100 Camelot Drive in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. I am here to represent Camping World on the project and answer any questions that you may have.
At this time, do we have any city council questions? No, we're good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 47. Item E2 is requested adoption ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance text amendment Zulu Tango dash 2024 dash 0002, amending and reordaining city code, Chapter 45, zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 45 dash 201, to add the definition of accessory dwelling unit in Article 5, Section 45 dash 518 dash 1, to add general regulations for accessory dwelling units. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? I do have a comment. This is, I want to say thank you to the planning and the Planning Commission for this. I think as you look at progressive policies that we can do here in Newport News, we have to find a way to ensure that everyone has access to a home. I truly believe that ADUs is the way to do that. I think we can also, in the future, minimize and completely remove parking minimums. And the last thing is, there's a lot across the South, a lot of churches, or a lot of cities looking at church land and things that we can do to build up on church property. So I'm excited that we're going to pass ADUs. I think it's been a long time coming, and with that, we'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Before we get to item three, I just saw, I want to say thank you to Dr. Best from the school board for coming tonight. We appreciate that, ma'am. Item 59. Item E3 is requested adoption ordinance authorizing zoning ordinance amendment Zulu Tango dash 2024 dash 0003, amending and reordaining city code, Chapter 45, Article 4, Section 45 dash 402, to add ADUs. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need a second. Thank you. Any discussion, Councilman Vick?
Yeah, I would like to say as we're, you know, deciding on this, the additional housing for people who have property, it is, as we know, that there's a housing crisis and housing issues throughout America, and so to be able to have a city that we have some solutions. And as people are living longer, and so that's important too, because now families are thinking about new ways of living to be able to take care of their elderly family.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E4 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the One City, One Future, 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PLN dash 2024 dash 003, proposing to change the land use designation from commercial, from community commercial to high-density residential for a total of 13.02 acres for properties located at 100 and 115 Regal Way. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
A request for a floor.
Yep. Actually, I think this one is just for the closed public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Yep. Any more discussion to close public hearing? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
At this time, any discussion, Vice Mayor?
Yes, I think for, this in particular, when we're talking about high density, we can continue the conversation, but I would love, I think condos are a great way for us to think about going forward rather than just apartments. So I wanted to say that now, but that's ideally where my brain was going when I read this earlier, but if we can continue that conversation, that'd be awesome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any further questions from city council? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E5 is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the One City, One Future, 2040 Comprehensive Plan Amendment, PLN dash 2024 dash 0004, proposing to change the land use designation from urban residential to neighborhood commercial for a total of .43 acres for properties located at 2702 Orkut Avenue and 1013 27th Street. Are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 100. Item E6 is requested adoption ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a lease by and between the city of Newport News and James Rivers Holding LLC for city-owned property at Minchfield Marina. Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas Kellum.
Mr. Thomas Kellum.
Mayor Jones, Honorable Councilman, I'm Mr. Tom Kellum, representing James River Holdings, here to answer any questions.
Okay. At this time, do we have any questions? We're good, sir. Thank you. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 126. Item E7 is requested adoption ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sales or condemnation portions of property for the Colbert's Lane Drainage Improvements Project. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanted to ask.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Do we, has that been, has there been any objection to any of these? Have we had to either condemn or have they accepted what we've offered? Or do we have any report on that?
I'll defer that to city manager.
Brian. Stilly, he's with the Department of Engineering.
No, ma'am, I haven't heard anything to the contrary. Towards acquisition, we haven't heard anything to the contrary.
Oh, no controversies.
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion from city council? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E8 is requested adoption ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sales or condemnation portions of property located at 900 Shore Drive and 908 Shore Drive for the Christopher Shores Drainage Improvement Project. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Vice, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Item E9 is a request adopted ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation a portion of property located at 14596 York Boulevard for the Stony Run Pile Bend Project. At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 164, minutes of the work session of August 13th, 2024. Page 222, minutes of the regular meeting of August 13th, 2024. And page 265, a resolution changing the location of the regular city council meeting, regular city council meeting, September twenty-fourth, Denby Community Center, located at one five one nine eight Work Boulevard. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Items F one through F three are inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions, page two sixty-eight, item G one, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Item G one is a request for city council to designate by motion the city's voting delegates and one alternative delegate for the Virginia Municipal League Business Meeting. Recommend approval.
Pause, I'm pausing for a motion.
So we have to nominate, right?
Who's in?
Yep.
Uh, uh, Mick. One sec. Are we nominated or?
Uh, one sec. Mr. Manager, are you done with that, that, uh, statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I am.
Okay. At this time, looking for a nomination, then.
I'll nominate myself and Councilman Cleon Long to serve as an alternate.
I believe, is that a motion that's on the table? I need a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, it is time, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Page two seventy-three, item G two, Mr. Manager.
Item G two is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a consolidated rail infrastructure and safety improvements grant funding agreement for one million, two hundred thousand dollars a fiscal year, twenty twenty-three Virginia Passenger Rail Authority Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Grant Funds for the Newport News Transportation Center Project. I recommend approval.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Appropriations, page three ninety, item H, Mr. Manager.
We have one appropriation item this evening, it is item H one. Item H one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars from fiscal year FY twenty twenty-five bond authorization for a replacement irrigation system at the Deer Run Golf Course. The Deer Run Golf Course currently uses an, an, an irrigation system that is over forty-five years old. The replacement of the irrigation system will eliminate costly repairs and damage caused by repeated failures of the current system. Uh, just by way, additional background, this project will complete the irrigation system modernization of both eighteen-hole golf courses at Deer Run. The irrigation on the Cardinal Course at Deer Run was replaced in twenty twenty and substantially decreased staff time and the cost of parts for performing repairs. I recommend approval of the appropriation.
At this time, are there any speakers?
No, sir.
Motion to approve item H one.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters remain to city council. I will call each name in the order it appears in front of me, and as a reminder, we have our red, yellow, and green light, please look at that as you make your comments. Don Quita Clemens.
Hello, everybody. My name is Don Quita Clemens, P O Box six thirty-one, Newport News, being two three six oh seven. Thank you for all that you did, and thank you for all that you're doing. We love the way that the city is headed. As a stakeholder in this community, who is always on the front line trying to break the toxic cycles that have continued to plague our community my entire life, I like to state my concerns. Our children have way more than a gun violence problem. They have a disparity problem. This situation stemmed from a school fight, spread it like wildfire. As I helped my godmother this morning, who made sure she stayed there with the child until the police arrived, my mind raced, and I thought about all the things I didn't have as a child that made my friends do these type of things. We, the community, would like to invite you to a meeting where we hash out solutions with the people, not for the people. Please do your best to answer our emails, our phone calls, because we are concerned. We've been in your red zones, we're alive. Kids don't have to die. It is very, very venerable. Let's break the cycle.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wait, what, what did you say the name was?
Yeah.
You said, it's a group?
What's your organization called, yeah?
Didn't you say you want us to come to something?
We're gonna send you an invite to a community meeting.
Oh, okay, now, so give us, give me your name, please?
Don Quita Clemens.
Okay. And what's the name of the group?
Frontline Millionaires.
Curtis Hartsfield. Good evening. Is there, can you just bend the mic down, just so everyone can hear who's listening? Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Perfect.
My name is Curtis Hartsfield, long-time resident of Newport News, uh, one zero zero tenor avenue. First of all, I would like to thank Newport News City Council and its staff for all of your hard work and everything that y'all do. Your work is not in vain. Our city is growing in a positive direction across the board. I am here on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Human Service workers, um, all participated in a democratic process on Tuesday, July twenty-seventh, twenty forty-four, at Main Street Library to select our union representation by voting, um, via ballot box and selecting two of our very own workers to represent our union on the Newport News Collective Bargaining Task Force. In order to form a more perfect union, establishing fairness, equity, ensuring workplace tranquility, providing a better common defense, promoting increase to general welfare to all public works employees, and securing the blessing of liberty, posterity, for all those who come behind us. Uh, Mr. Keith Graham and myself, Curtis and Hartsfield, have been selected by our, by vote, uh, from our coworkers to represent them on the Newport News Collective Bargaining Task Force, please accept our nominations. At this time, as a collective, we are denouncing our affiliation and representation, um, formally from our United Electric, Radio, and Machine Workers of America, known as the UE, Union, and have democratically voted to align with La Nuna, Laborer International Union of North America, to support our collective bargaining interests and Collective Bargaining Task Force. We are ready to proceed with the next steps for this task force and look forward to this historic process. In the words of Darkin Mok Nuthukine, we are asking the city to respect the dignity of labor, so often we overlook the work and significance of those who are not in the professional jobs, or those who are not in so-called big jobs, that whenever work, excuse me, that whenever you are engaged in work that serves humanity and for the building of humanity, it has dignity and it has worth. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. All labor has dignity. Thank you for your time and support. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mendel Service.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Update, the last time I talked about seeing more support for the arts and artists, pleased to say that I'd been meeting with Mr. Miller, he's a wonderful person, and been very encouraging, and it's, it's slow when I'm making progress to see what I can do to help develop more support for artists and the arts, so that Newport News is a destination for more people rather than a drive-by or a drive-through. But I also want to talk about the difficulties and challenges those of us who take the bus have to deal with. There've been a lot of wonderful events at City Center and Port Warwick, but if you have a walker, if you're aged, if you have a disability, there's no buses that come close to those events. I go to them because I'm trying to do some fact-finding to see what's going on, but by the time I get there, I'm exhausted because you have to walk from Fisherman's, um, Road, they used to go into City Center, but now no buses go into that area, and the events at Port Warwick, you have to walk from Jefferson, you're too tired to enjoy yourself, so that's a challenge. And then the other thing is, I had to go to the courthouse, not as a criminal, I'm glad to say, but I finally brought, I brought my name back after being divorced. Long story, good, good ending, I'm divorced, but when I went in there, I was treated like I was a criminal. They're shouting at you, they're saying all these commands about put your phone over here, da-da-da-da-da-da. One gentleman said, you can't take your cellphone in, fine. As a bus rider, you have to pack everything with you, you can't go home and do several trips. I can understand that I'm using the locker, but then when I went back into the line, the person who was in charge started screaming at us, screaming at me, saying, you can't take your laptop in. I said, the gentleman said I couldn't take my phone in, well, I'm telling you now what you can't do. And I thought, wait a minute, you're not my cousin, not my sister, we're not related, I might look like you, but don't talk to me like I'm your long-lost relative. My suggestion is that take a few dollars and go to Office Depot and make a few posters to put into the lobby at the, in the courthouse, saying what we're not allowed to take in. Because when she's shouting, it just reverberates, and you can't hear what she's saying, and then you get told off like you're, you've done some crime. So that's a challenge as a bus rider. Fortunately, I knew somebody, so I was able to take my belongings, leave them in their office, but when anything happens to me, I always think about other people. I saw a gentleman that was definitely struggling with his cane, and he was having so much difficulty. Somebody said to me, well, they're short-staffed. If having a bad day, oh, that's loud! Jesus, okay, I'm finished, bye-bye.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, Lord, I didn't see it.
Anthony Fisella.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here, I work with an organization called Earth Bond U that deals with ecological education. I spoke before the council on September twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, about a topic you won't hear in the presidential debate tonight, despite the fact that it affects all of our fate, nuclear disarmament. Mayor, former Mayor McKinley Price signed, uh, the Mayor's for Peace petition, and I spoke to the council, and it seemed as if the Newport News City Council was interested in signing the city's appeal for the treaty for the prohibition of nuclear weapons. So, part one of my presentation here is to ask if the city council did sign that, city's appeal, and if not, if they would consider doing so. Part two, another topic you won't hear in the presidential debate tonight despite the fact it affects everyone here, plastic pollution. I bike around the city all the time, and I see plastic everywhere. Plastic is something we share, not just as a concern, but in our bodies. Every single human being in this room has microplastics in their body. We find microplastics in the deepest depths of the ocean, on the highest mountain tops. You cannot go anywhere on this planet and not find microplastics. We get it from our tap water. If you drink, you get it in your body. If you drink water from a plastic bottle, as you have right there, you get twice as much microplastics in your body as if you drink from tap water. Does the city monitor the levels of plastic in the water we're drinking? That's another question. Now, we also get microplastics from food, so if you eat, you get microplastics there as well. Eleven million tons of waste from municipal cities, from municipal waste goes into the oceans every year. Most of that is plastic. The fish consume it, at least a hundred thousand marine animals die per year, and that goes into our bodies as well. So, what can the city do about it? Earth Bond U has adopted a spot on Warwick Boulevard, but every time we clean it up, there's more plastic. As a coastal city, it's going into the waterways, it's going into our bodies, and I can say from looking out at what we're doing, trying to help clean up, and what the city is doing, it's not enough, and what will we do? Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Epps.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
My name is Carrie Epps, uh, fifty-eight Rivermont Drive. I also represent the organization Earth Bond U. Uh, figured we wouldn't have enough time to cover everything, so I'm following my colleague there, Mr. Fisella.
Sir, could you just put the mic up, just so people, so people can hear you?
Okay. So, in regard to the adopt a spot that we have taken on, we've cleaned it, um, six times now, every time we fill bags, multiple bags of plastic waste. Uh, we're doing our part to clean our one little section of the city, where our section ends, the waste continues. There, on either side of Warwick Boulevard where our spot is, just past the, uh, Memorial Cemetery, uh, in the Yates area, I noticed off the beaten path a stream that runs, and I have looked it up on Google Maps, and it flows directly into Deep Creek, which flows directly into the James River. Along, along this stream, there are signs of, of homeless encampment, and there is plastic refuse more than, than one could even care to count. I propose the city organize a cleanup day of this area, and also look across the broader city to, to find other areas of concern, uh, near waterways or just out in the open that need to be addressed. Uh, it's not enough to expect the citizens to do, adopt a spot, there are more spots than citizens to adopt them. Um, I would be more than glad to offer my assistance in the organization and, and cleanup of, of the said spot, uh, adjacent to our adopt a spot. I'm more than willing to help in that regard. Uh, we also think the city could do other things in regards to that, um, uh, putting more trash bins. Our spot is almost a mile in length, and there is not a single trash receptacle along that route. Uh, it's basically between Boxley Road and Nettles Drive, Maxwell Lane. Um, hire more workers to do cleanup, hire or appoint a task force to look into the, the plastic waste and what the best ways to go about or doing, to do it are. Uh, qualify people who, who know how to address the, the matter. Uh, do a clean city campaign on, on billboards or signage where, where every citizen can see this and, and maybe be encouraged to take it upon themselves to do their part as well. Water filling stations that can encourage people to use refillable bottles instead of disposable plastic water bottles, that can go a long way to, to reduce plastic waste, and considering banning certain single-use plastics or instituting, uh, fines or payments in order to use them, uh, are just some suggestions. So, uh, respectfully bring this all to your attention, um, I, I look forward to working with you on, on cleaning the broader area around our adopt a spot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick, well, one sec, sir.
Sir, I, I, I would like to address, um, because I, I feel your sentiments, and I feel the same way, I really do. I tell people I grew up during the time, during the Keep America Beautiful campaigns that were national, and so, and so we've lost that, but I do feel like that, that we have too many different spots in, in the area, really in our communities, that we need to have attention to, and I think it would be a great thing, and I've said this before, to be able to involve more youth so that they can grow up, uh, being a more responsible and knowing the impact that litter does bring in, in, in our communities, and, and the fact that it, it bothers me, and I know, I've already talked to Frank James several times, our public works director, but it just seems like we can't get a handle on people even knowing the time that they're supposed to put trash out for public works, and, and, and that we have to work, I believe we have to work harder on. I believe we can find some solutions, but I think it's gonna, um, take us getting together, people who are concerned, and I, I join you myself to just really sit down and talk about some of those things, to see how we can take our city up a notch and be able to, uh, be more effective, so thank you for bringing that. So thank you for bringing that.
I absolutely look forward to that, and I will contact you.
Please.
We can talk further.
Thank you.
And I would suggest you contact the school division and see if you can get some help along those lines with that school.
Volunteer, like student volunteers?
Well, yeah, and getting the youth interested in their environment and what's happening to it.
Yes.
And to be able to pull some of the people who are at our, the homeless day center. For Oaks, thank you Vice Mayor. Because sometimes they're sitting in there as opposed to if we had some assignments, I believe that that will help them gain skills to be able to work and be able to earn money.
Yes.
So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Franks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to talk about a particular area, a highway or road of concern. And the particular area is the west end of Denby Boulevard from Catalina and Evelyn to the boat landing. This particular area of concern has a couple problems. One, it's a very narrow road. It's got a speed limit posted there of 25 miles an hour. However, the individuals that use that road have no regard to the speed. The road has no consideration for pedestrians. The sidewalk ends at Catalina and Evelyn. What I would like to discuss here and bring to your attention is that there's a need for a sidewalk for pedestrians from that area. It's an area of about one-half mile from Catalina to the boat landing. It's a, it's a very narrow road. It is unsafe for pedestrians, and it is used by a good number of people that enjoy walking. In many cases, it's very hazardous when you have oncoming traffic or traffic that you put in a squeeze play. There's a drop down from Evelyn. It drops down into a little gully. That's very dangerous when you have a car and a pedestrian. The high school uses that particular road to run their track team and their physical training. And it's just no room for pedestrians and, you know, people to walk along the road. So in your budget, maybe you want, which should consider sidewalk. During my residency in, on Denby, I've lived there for 30, 30 years. At 23, Denby is my current address. I've been there since 2012. I've been at 62 for 25 years. So I'm familiar with that area. I'm familiar with the traffic pattern. Let me just let you know that the residents from that particular area are not the speed problem. The problem occurs at the boat landing with all the traffic that goes down there. There's a good number of people that maintain the speed, but there's just as many that disregard the speed. I would propose that you would put some speed humps down, similar to what's on Eastwood Drive. There's some rubber platforms that were put down and controls the speed at 15 miles per hour. Thank you.
Sir.
Councilman Woodbury.
I wanted to ask, I know exactly where you're talking about because I go down there. And there are also very, very deep, as I have observed, ditches beside the road, which makes it a problem to make a walkway.
If you drive up on Route 5 from Williamsburg to Richmond, you can see how they've handled that. They've put a boardwalk concept and spanned the ditch with a boardwalk. I mean, if you, if you really look at that again, and I would encourage those that are not familiar with that area.
I know exactly what you're talking about, and I agree with you. It is very hazardous.
Yeah, you know, it's, you know, I could go on and talk about the three accidents that I saw there, but we don't want to.
What's that? We're gonna go to the Vice Mayor and then Councilman Long. Vice Mayor.
I only want to say, sir, I'm assuming you came with Ms. Williams, who has reached out to me already. And so my promise to her is to stay back with our Assistant Director of Engineering. And we're going to do and see what we can do for you all specifically in this area. So I just wanted to let you all know. I know you're about to get up and speak, but I will stay back and we can talk about it.
Okay. Councilman Long.
Yeah, sir, what was that Route 5? You said there was a location.
What was that again?
What location did you refer to, and Dr. Woodbury at the?
Denby Boulevard, the west end of.
The Route 5 you said there was.
Route 5, if you, from Williamsburg to Richmond. Route 5 has a real nice bike path, and there's a couple gullies and so forth. And they span those with, you know, wooden railroad type structures. You know, it's very nice.
All right, thanks. Thanks for that information.
Thank you, sir. Jeffrey Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As we just heard, I also, on Denby Boulevard, I live at 15 Denby. We have owned the house since 2017, but my wife's grandfather actually built the house in 1970, so we are very familiar with the area. With concerns to the speed, we had a, the speed thing put on. I can't think of the name right now. Put on in 2001 where we had approximately 500 vehicles a day at an average speed of 47 miles an hour. So you gotta take that into consideration that a quarter of those cars are doing 70-plus. We were told that because that was during COVID, we had to do it again. So we just completed another one at 540-something cars at an average speed of 33 miles an hour, which is a little lower, but more than 25 miles an hour. In the past five years, we have picked up five of our animals off that road. And to include my wife getting struck by a vehicle driving down that road while walking our dog, because there are no sidewalks. It is a 25 mile an hour residential area. And as great as the budget is to expand and maintain the docks for everybody outside of the community to come and enjoy, the residents that live there aren't enjoying it because we have to worry about our families getting hurt, the children getting hurt, our animals getting hurt. And it's a big animal community, too. You have deer, possums, raccoons, our cats, dogs. So even though it's 25 miles an hour, clearly by two different speed records, nobody cares that it's 25 miles an hour. We've had the officers come down and sit down, which is great. All the officers, all the responders have been amazing. But when they sit down at the end of the dock, the people that come down there, come down to see if anybody's there, and then they take that quarter-mile strip and race back up. I have about 30 different videos, including one of myself driving past my house at 25 miles an hour just to use as a reference to the rest of the people speeding past the house. And I'd love to share that with anybody who would like to see them. But I see that's yellow, and I don't want it to beep at me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kristy Williams.
Thank you, council. I'm Kristy Williams. I live at 15 Denby Boulevard. And I also have Jean. She was too afraid to speak. She lives at 3 Denby. I will be talking about two different things, about our traffic calming as well as the flood issue that's happening down in Denby. We spoke about the sidewalks as a great option. We spoke about how there are students that walk down there to train for high school all the time. The situation is you have more than four feet of open space that is owned and shared as a, your portion and our portion, an easement that we would be happily to offer you that four feet for a sidewalk. As you shared, Ms. Woodbury, you, there is essentially a very deep decline. We have photos that I can show you where we actually have an entire level that we'll be able to show you, that it goes instantly right from the white line straight down. The water option of it as well would help us with the sidewalks because then we'd be able to work on the culvert that we have issues with. In 2003, Isabel took four and a half feet of water into my home, and most everybody on our street had their homes damaged. Unfortunately for my home, because the way that it was done, my Papa did not have any flood insurance, and they did not raise our home, the 10 feet that was required for everyone else. With that being said, we are now essentially the lowest lying area at 15 Denby. There is a culvert that is directly open since '03. The waterways changed. What happened is now the water now comes directly into our side, but that level keeps the water from coming in. Now, the culverts are damaged. They were kind enough two years ago to put in a nice piece to be able to keep the water from flowing in and be able to still leave as well. However, the culvert, the water is coming now around the culvert. So that leaves that device that you guys put in for us null and void. It does not work. I have photos that we can show you where the water comes all the way up to trees. I have dead trees that I have to take out on my own so we can follow the rules of the city, because we can't have dead trees in our yard. But the saltwater is taking it over. We really truly ask that you not forget about the stretch of Denby. We are the quiet ones. We are the retired military. We are the active-duty military. We still have a voice, but we try not to use it until we actually need it with force. And not with force, that was the wrong word, but within groups and numbers. Please give us the time. And thank you, Mr. Bethany, for agreeing to speak with us because this has been an ongoing issue for over five years.
Gotcha. We'll take care of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Higmott.
Evening, board members. I'm here to discuss the situation on Saunders Boulevard. So many accidents, speeders, city buses speeding, school buses with children on them speeding like they're in NASCAR. People coming from the Hampton Newport News line heading to the west toward 17. You can sit there and watch them. I know they're 50 miles an hour. A couple Fridays ago, my house got hit at my bedroom. Since January, I had a four-by-four, six-foot post from my privacy fence come through my bedroom window because somebody was speeding, wiped out, hit the electrical pole, busted it in two places, sent a post from my fence through my bedroom window within three feet of my head, and I had glass all over me in my bed. I've called the mayor's office and left a message. The next day, I got a phone call from the engineer. He wrote down my concerns. I told him, I says, what you need to do, my suggestion is, from Newport News Hampton, put speed humps up all the way through to the west on the other side of the S-curves. From there to 17, make it 25 miles an hour and enforce it with the police officers. They have been out, which I'm thankful for. They make their presence on the corner, but soon as they're gone, back to reality. Speeders every day. I'm terrified of mowing the ditch bank. If I don't, I get these from one of your departments of codes. I put my life on the line to mow that grass every week because nothing's been done. The engineers put a speed monitor up there to monitor the speeders, the way I understand it. He apologized to me because he parked on a driveway that goes to my backyard off in Saunders. He apologized that he backed in farther in my yard. And I looked at him, I said, why'd you do that? He says, because I felt unsafe because of the speeders. The police officers have a name for my road, and it's called Death Road, which is pretty pathetic. People's known about this for years. It ain't happened just overnight. People that's lived in the area for 20 years said it's getting worse and worse and worse every year. I'm asking you guys to seriously take a look at it. Put some speed humps up and slow the people down. And where there's not speed bumps all the way to 17, enforce it 25. If you cross over 17 and go to the west on that road, everybody knows it's a speed trap. You better be doing 25 miles an hour, you're gonna get a ticket. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll take a look at it.
One more thing.
Say again?
It's so bad at my house since the last time I got hit. Me and my daughter don't sleep in our bedrooms, which faces Saunders Road.
Okay, we have engineering. We'll take a look at it after this meeting. Thank you, sir. John Jones.
John L. Jones, 45 Saunders Road. Rob is my neighbor. I stood in front of you in June in reference to the Saunders Road fatality we had. Pretty humble sitting there. Picked a night, had a jazz band, All-American City Party. So it really didn't seem like I should say too much. And with the video I sent, just said it all. Since then, in June, we've had seven bad accidents. I've got a camera. I've got several really nice wrecks. Engineering has been out there. And actually, when this happened, engineering sent me a letter telling me they know they have a problem with the Saunders Road artery. It's a relatively straight road which causes people to speed and causes people to wreck. Well, the part of Saunders Road is straight, but where the problem is, is not. My next-door neighbor, Jean Colly, bought the house next door to me in 1959 when it was new. She was diagnosed with stage IV cancer. So we've had a visual for the last three weeks with her 67-year-old children that grew up in that house. And they reminisce how many accidents there's been on that road. Fatalities, decapitations. The lady that just come through there last Friday and run through Rob's house blew a 3O. I was habitual offender DUI back in the 90s, so I was part of the trap problem. I'm looking to be part of the solution now. Engineers did, there's been 20-some fatalities on that road. And like you said, all these 25 mile an hour stretches were always known for radar. And you knew not to speed past 1011 North Green, they were out there. You knew not to speed between Fort Houston Boulevard and Lee Hall because Officer Clary was there. He would get you. He got me Thanksgiving morning between deer hunting and dinner. So I know that what the deal on that was. And I feel like the radar has been replaced with these automated gunshot detection devices. We got one on Saunders Road. And there was a problem with Richneck and Shields Road back in the late 80s, early 90s. The city did the studies. They did everything. Eventually, they shut that road down and closed it. And that would be the cheapest way for the budget for the city, too. I'm asking you to close Saunders Road down right there at Spring Trace, where the reservoir comes up close. I think the speed bumps would help. We got, I mean, it's a problem. It's speeders, it's cut through. Engineering told me way back when they were widening the Hampton version of Saunders Road, the city spent millions of dollars on Hampton Road Center Parkway to get cars off of Saunders Road, and they weren't gonna spend another dime on it. Like we learned in June, you're getting ready to bury the pipe and put a culvert underground. We've got to ditch so deep out there that cars get stuck in it. Hopefully, that would help. And I would just ask you, it's time to really do something, Mayor.
Okay, we'll take a look at it. Thank you, sir. I think that's the last citizen comments I have. Dr. Best, did you want to say anything? Okay. Our next item is gonna be new business. We'll actually start, we'll do city, actually, we'll do Councilman Ely and Councilman Vick first.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out here today. Definitely voices your opinion. Your voices were definitely heard. I know myself and as well as my colleagues definitely appreciate citizen constituents. That's how we hear your voices and make great decisions for the city. I also like to thank Dr. Best for being here from the school board. Me and her had the opportunity today to visit Mitchell High School and to talk with the staff and the principals. And just to see the tears on the face of the administrator was definitely touching to both of us. Also like to thank once again Chief Drew and the fire chief for all their workers today at the scene. Very traumatic day today for Newport News and for our youth. We had the opportunity to participate in the community care walk. And it was just sad. It was a sad day. And just seeing so many citizens just want to come together to have a better Newport News. So I just want to thank all the citizens that came out today, the staff in the city. And I also like to thank, special thanks to Parks Recreation and to Bo and his team. We had a back-to-school event last, well, two Saturdays ago at King Laker Park. And the staff really did a great job making sure the event was good. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Vick.
Yes, I do want to echo what Councilman Ely said. It was really a sad situation to hear about the shooting and the death of that shooting so early in the morning. And just the entire situation around it that somebody is, that a child is trying to go to school and ends up in a tragic death. And so, you know, we can continue to pray, but, you know, being able to work with our citizens, our police, fire, parents, everybody, organizations, trying to continue to work, our schools, to see what we can come up with. And even though places are struggling throughout America, maybe it is something we can work together to come up with because it's very disheartening, to say the least, that something this tragic can happen anyway, but particularly as somebody, a young child, is on their way to school. And with that, it's very emotional for me. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go back up to City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, I feel compelled to respond to this issue this evening. As an employee who is long-serving here in this community, I can remember a time within the last two decades when it was very difficult to make sense of a tragic loss like the one that we experienced today. And it's still difficult to make sense of it. The difference, and what I'm so proud to say, is the way in which this community has moved forward with developing partnerships and engaging not only with government and government with the citizens, but there's so many examples today that provide hope that not only can we make a difference, but we are making a difference. And it's hard to say that, given the loss of a young person today, but I do feel a sense of progress, not only from those who are directly involved at the grassroots level, but also from the way in which our institutions and our public safety officials engage. And so I want to offer my expression of hope and optimism as we continue to bring forward new solutions and we continue to strive to make the city a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney.
I'd just like to echo Alan's sentiments and my condolences with the family and the community as a whole for the loss that was suffered today. But as Alan said, I think we have hope, and I think we have seen a little more activity in moving forward and trying to push for new solutions. And I look forward to working with this council to see what we can do to further address this problem.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk.
I have nothing, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Woodbury.
Thank you. I am not going to speak tonight at length. I do thank you all for being here and for engaging in our city's triumphs and our city's failures and our city's ongoing necessity to be alert and to contribute and to be engaged. I think the days tragedies have spoken for themselves. So thank you all. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Harris.
Yes, just send my condolences out to the family, to the students, the young people that are impacted, to the staff of Mitchell High School and to all those that continue to work as hard as I see people working to, in attempts to rectify, mitigate situations such as this. There's been a lot of great strides made over the couple of years in programming and partnerships, but even, you know, just one is too many. So as we move forward, just continue to see what we can do to help those organizations that are out there on the front lines, working with residents, dealing with these, these traumatic events and then also partnering with, you know, mental health agencies to continue to offer services for those that have experienced traumatic events because it's, it's sad, but it's also a little frustrating just knowing that we still, even with the strides that we make, we still have situations that make us feel like we took a step backwards. So once again, my condolences as we continue to pray for the family, pray for our community, pray for our city, pray for our country, as you know, this is something that even though we're feeling the impacts of it here, it's something that continues to manifest itself across the country unfortunately. So that's all I have, Mayor, and just look forward to seeing what we can do to keep our young people as engaged and active as possible so we don't continue to have situations such as this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Long.
I want to echo the sentiment of my colleagues. I offer condolences to the family, the loss of the child today. And I do think we are making some progress, but like Councilman Harris said, it seems like when, when things like this happen, tragedies like this happen, we feel like we're set back, but I do believe that we are working towards a better city. I would say I thought about this all day today to try to figure out what, what more can we do to help our young people, not have a, have a situation where they do not feel maybe that they're in disparity, but have more hope for a better life to come. You know, one thing that was mentioned today about the speeding, that's one comment I hear often over and over again from citizens about speeding across the city. And I think engineering department, I thought they also was the ones that managed the speed humps. Just want to make sure that information is getting out to the citizens so they understand that there's a process to get speed humps in areas near your house. And also if we can start looking at other solutions, I know the state just offered cities the opportunity to use speed cameras near, near schools because I know a lot of times you'll find a lot of speeding take place near school and it happens to be in neighborhoods, especially in the elementary school, school. So if we could start to think about some other solutions that are available. I know we are working on the, the sidewalk campaign. We're trying to extend sidewalks in the area, but make sure we're, we're moving at aggressive pace because I think one, one of the comments tonight is we want to make sure citizens enjoy living in our community and be able to enjoy the amenities and be able to walk your dogs or maybe walk your child to school. That should be available, so we just need to make sure we're, we're staying on top of that, that sidewalk plan. Last thing I want to mention is October 1st, United, October 1st, United Way is hosting a breakfast for the business community to talk about affordable childcare solutions or how more affordable childcare solution can be created and get the business involved in that conversation. If you have an area of business, please go to the United Way website. You can find the registration link and it's also a survey to get information about your business and, and your concern with childcare, maybe with your employees. So take a look at United Way's website, the registration, that's October 1st is the event. And that's all I have.
And then we're going to go back to Councilman Ely.
I just want to say real quick, I would like to thank SRO Washington. He's the SRO at Mitchell High School. When it was a lot of grieving and a lot of unanswered questions today, Officer Washington made sure that the staff, the principals and everyone was okay. So thank you once again, Officer Washington, for all that you did today. I know your heart, your mind is heavy and you still had the energy to come here today. So we really appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I, I share the same sentiments as my colleagues. It is extremely frustrating and disappointing to hear the news this morning or anytime you hear about a tragedy that stemmed from something that could have been avoided for sure. And I'm just, I'm just tired of people dying over dumb stuff. That's the, that's the, the, the hardest thing to, to come to grips with is knowing that it could be, could be avoidable, whether it's having conflict resolution skills, whether it's family dynamics. I know there's still more information that, that, that needs to be figured out, shared with the community, but it is extremely disappointing and frustrating. So I'm here, I know everyone up, up here cares and we're going to do everything within our power to, to try and prevent this from happening, but it's going to take much more than your counsel, it's going to take much more than words. Prayers are important, but I think accountability also is something that we need to stress. So that is all that I, that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I think everyone on, on council has, has said the same thing and I do want to double down with the vice is saying, I've always been a fan of deeds and not words and I think right now our children in our community need to see us. And so I, you know, I'll, I know that myself and members of the South District will be at the bus stop in the morning and will be at the school. So I think they need to see us, our kids need to see us now. So with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.